35 35 35 35 35 35 35 35 36 36 36 36 36 36 36 36 36 36 36 36 36 36 36 36 31 31 31 31 31 31 31 31 31 Amen. 31 31 Secretary of State George Tull Vice President Vice President Chris Salo Vice President Vice President Review 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 No more taxes 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 Solution No more taxes Here you can think other than that No more taxes Review Review Secretary of State Review
Good morning, everyone. Vice President Agenda Not Being one of the more comments of it. This morning, September 13, 2023, we have a regular meeting. I don't recall if we have all any review of the agenda. Now, people in the meeting on the 16th, as they do not issue amounts of financial net worth. Multi-day financial summary. A. Yeah. The next thing they are more Number five. All business. New business resolution action. Resolution number 129 supporting and approving scholarship assistance for the following full-time students in the amount of $500. The application is in the role. It's called a process of A. Yeah. It's going to be paid out of the scholarship account 13. Line item 6721 to assist full-time students. Isabel Herbert, Boykin, Devertonino, Derek Yasi, Cyrilia Bryant, and Luria Yazi, and Samson Jake. Now, people in A. Yeah. Housing discretionary funds. $8,600 for line 09 account number 6724. Payback to be issued by the manager. And that is for Mr. Wilson Yazi. I don't care. They know. She in the office. I don't process the application. She I don't Resolution number 131 supporting the opposing uranium hearing dumping at the rural business landfill. As for contaminating water sources, it will also contaminate the areas around the environment further than refugee, the Navajo people and their community. Resolution to be sponsored by Mr. Chase Smith. So, issue Next resolution we have is resolution number 132. And this is resolution for the Artesian well at Raco Marcus. And the resolution is going to Nanjing Turk, director of the Water Development in Arizona. Resolution sponsor is Mr. R. H. Havas. Next resolution, September WHO September 133 is also resolution sponsored by Mr. R. H. Havas. A. Yeah. Resolution is going to the Bureau of Land Affairs Superintendent Mr. Soucy to withdraw land for one acre. One acre, six acres in the Dushan. One acre of a lot of land that then disportion number SF016200 on the east in section 10, township 17, North Bange 06. So, there's a potential site for broadband and cell tower in the Navajo community of Raco Marcus. So, we're asking for this, and this is what is going to be moving forward. Next one is resolution 134. And that is requesting for approval and payment for Ms. Cheryl Largo. She's a new candidate. Club seat member. And for her to be paid the three meetings that she has attended. Resolution sponsor is Mr. Salo. And then, of course, we have the report. There's 10 minutes for each one. Mr. R. H. Havas, Mr. George Tull, Landlord, Mr. Kai Yasi, Derek Torino, CSC, Howard Martin, the Veterans Organization, Mr. Lieutenant Nolan School Board, Mr. Lieutenant Nolan, Club Seat President, Mr. Chase Smith, High Press Secretary Counsel, and Mr. Fornelia, Mayor Chase, and your supervisor. And announcements, of course, we have all our meetings, date schedule. See that for yourselves. All of those are scheduled the first week, most of them. So, and that's what our agenda looks like today.
Reports need to be communicated. Okay. First, the motion. The first question. All right. We have looking for questions. Go ahead.
So, I'd like to request that get that on the agenda. Under new business. A. Yeah. For discussion at this time. One was the budget. Set committees. A. Um, you came back. I don't have policy. We need to have a discussion on the policy. The chapter policy. I don't know. Inventory of materials. Of what's in these storages out there in the world. I don't Sunday meeting. That I didn't wish no other. I don't have a corrective action plan on the sanction. It could come. Let's have a discussion. Thank you.
Is that okay with you?
Uh, yes.
Is it? Are you going to allow that to put on the agenda?
Requesting?
Yeah.
I think we kind of already discussed that during the planning meeting that having it on Sunday would not benefit us because most of the time businesses are open Monday through Friday. So, having it on Sunday would not be necessary. So, budget. Yes. Committee. I don't know exactly the committee. That just creates my problem, just like we were discussing. Sanction, we are so the LGA is very important. And then also, I request to be on the agenda during the planning meeting for the redway road construction. That was an address on here as well.
Okay. All right. The budget meeting. It all day is not a budget. It's a short question. We have not sat down to do the budget yet. Planning budget all day is not a purpose. So, the date for it yet. The budget is not. Our policy committee. A. Yeah. Because we are right now. Club seat committee was 103 under it. So, let me more committees. And yeah, but A. Yeah. A. Yeah. We're going to review the budget. And the policy. And here presented to you. Uh, indeed. So, it is November. The chapter officials. Murdis coordinate to review the policy. I'm sure change if not. Change if not. What is she? I don't Sunday meeting. Sunday meetings. Because we have they have other things to do on Sundays. Because we keep it on Wednesdays. Always been on Wednesday for for decades. Not we're used to on Wednesdays. If you change a thing, we'd like a corner. But which is also so it did. I don't corrections. Action plan. Correction action. It next month planning meeting. Said in October, planning. We could sanction. The chapter there's going to be two findings. That 2016. Because it did not it for next planning meeting. Today I do what I can to to take it come. Any other? So, we got the questions. Bert.
Mr. Chavas, you know, I'm it's not your place to do that. But then presented to us. I don't know. We make a decision. A. Yeah. There's first motion, second motion. I don't to have it on the agenda. I don't know. So, it's that's wrong. It's unfair.
To that please. She has the right to say that. She motioned second.
Yeah, but I make the motion.
Second motion.
Here, Mr. Janet, she'll explain how this is done. Because it's unfair to deny one committee member.
So, they get up to explain this. And I said, okay, well, then we put on. Yes. Came here again, requested it.
Yeah, because
why? Just told you again. The second time, the third time. I don't know many times I told you this.
Because it needs to be presented to the people. If you're planning, you do not have to plan, not to turn.
So, it's not on the agenda this month. Not this month, no. Yeah, that's it. Because this is last this is all kind of negative things. Data, just something negative. It's not working positively. These are all just negative. Because we need to get out of that. Trying to show me. There will be new waters. Because let's put positive on everything. These are negative. Because so it is okay. But second and first motion. If there's any other questions, let's vote.
I have a question before you vote. I don't know how you're operating hard, but it looks like a That's the reason why people come to the meeting. Okay. First, the last time, what she said to us was, I didn't ask for anything. I will put it on the agenda. That's what you're calling it the rest media. I couldn't That's a good method. That's the way it should go. Yeah, why do you have planning meeting? Come on, Art, you know that. Okay. Do you have That's the reason why you're up there. We even have no officials up there. And live with us. That's the way it should be. None of those things as a president. You shouldn't say that it's negative. Be positive all the time. I don't care. People bring in negative stuff. Be positive. That's the way a leadership should be. I call I don't It's freedom of speech. Okay. That's what you call freedom of speech. Even government is like that. I don't In the They have every right to be involved in the planning of the budget. Call it up. It's pre-planned. That's not the way it's supposed to work. But I don't understand. 56,000. That's how much to carry over is. 56,000. So, that's my comment. So, when I want to, I'm not giving you the negative stuff.
Thank you. Last meeting. Should introduce a resolution. WHO July 23, 112 Resolution requesting bipartisan administration and chapter officials to begin the process for minor revision of chapter policy. That's including discretionary funds, sponsorship, and PAP policy. And must follow a detailed submission approval process process by a community member at a public hearing and review approval by the National Justice. So, let's as we go at that resolutions source. Okay. So, what we want to do is bring VP policies. Scholarship or housing discretionary funds. I don't PP. Then make comments on it. Then we will come together. It's for an example, scholarship funds. A lot of the people are saying it's too low. Do we need to increase that? I don't know. I don't PP hiring. Per hour gives at $10. Do we need to make that at $12? All those, we have to talk about it. And then definitely give it to you. That's what we want to do. We want to do all these policies changed. And then again, those are good ideas. We are aware of that. Qua planning meeting. You did mention it. And then this has been in the works for almost nine months. But now is the good time to do it. So, Cramp Learning Trade Service Center. He's going to join us. And then we're going to go ahead and fix this up. So, we're working on it. I don't chapters. We know of this in that at least for Eastern Agency. I don't know if we're going to get the 289,000. There's a big cut. So, we might get less. I don't It's not like, for an example, LGA. They all have stipulations to it. Their restricted funds. But what we were told is we have the club seat. We have the veterans. We have the senior counsel. Those are the main ones we work with. I call where we don't want to forget anyone. We want to not forget the veterans. So, what we want to do is have you turn in a plan to us. Don't go overboard. Just think about what you can deal with. If you have club seat members that need to be paid, put all that down on a monthly basis. You want a $20 reimbursement. You want to do refreshments for some of your things that you do. Put that in there. Then when we come together, we will ask if it's allowable. Then we can do it that way. It's not that we're deaf ears to this. We are listening to you. I don't these policies. You have a resolution system. So, that's important. I don't corrective action plan. We want to make sure we have everybody's got copies or we can put it on the screen. There's some things that we're not following that we would like for you to know about. So, and then the Sunday meeting. I have not seen a resolution. The way, I don't know, 23 years ago. Everybody keeps saying we meet the second and the third Wednesday. Again, Sunday was an option. But a lot of people said, I don't Sunday. But then there's just only a few of us. What about those people that are out there? They need to know about this too. So, it's not a dip end. We just want to make sure everybody knows about it. But see this, the information I have.
So, a lot of what we're saying, we're destroying in circles. During the planning meeting, this one time meeting, we should have been talking about the elderly. The winter's coming up. We haven't discussed any of that. The senior center, we haven't discussed. So, we're destroying in circles. A lot of it's already been mentioned. And we're throwing in circles. So, we need to move forward.
She has started the meeting. Yeah, not a big team. It's not a big
Okay. I really I call we don't follow the US Constitution. Though thank you. It will come in. This word, freedom of speech comes in, the right to assemble, the right to protect. And just so I'm saying the network thing. So, we need to respect the people here. So, we need to respect the people here, eh, I don't think, eh, eh. So, this, I'm sorry, we're speaking, eh, 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 we can't, eh, that's discrimination. I read them, eh, we don't get no, eh. I call, the best people is, eh, I can, eh, we, 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 eh, 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 eh. I call, substitute motion, eh, she, eh, some, then, eh, 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 eh. Substitute motion to add those items, eh, eh. Substitute motion, eh, 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 eh.
Can you identify yourself, please? Michelle, Michelle.
Okay, eh, 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 eh. Play, play, two, three. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Okay, ten, eh, okay, a pose, Michelle. Look, eh, 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 eh. Six.